Good evening. Welcome to the February 5th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and get started with roll call, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
President.
Deputy Mayor Joyce.
President.
Councilmember Figueroa.
President.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Sheldon Brown of Cause of Christ Ministries. Pastor Sheldon?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, distinguished guests, let's bow our head in reverence to God. Lord, we thank you for this day. This city has been through so much. And Lord, throughout these times, you have continued to bless this city. You have blessed those who have been in authority, authority figures, the Lord. Lord, we ask that the people of this city continue to rise up and be responsible, committed to their community, uniting together to do the work you have called us to do. Bless them this evening as they come together. May they unite together tonight, as they have done in the past, to help this city prosper in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Borrego, would you like to lead us?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
And at this time, I do have a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Payom Kowicham, the people of the West, as a traditional land caretakers of the land on which Oceanside is built and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Payom Kowicham are known as Lysenyo and are made up of seven bands: La Jolla, Palapauma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Soboba. We are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and we pay our respects to the Lysenyo, past, present, and emerging. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Lysenyo Territory and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit.
Thank you. Right, so we've gotten to the point of the proclamations and presentations, and we do have a proclamation this evening. And it's a very, very important one, one that the City of Oceanside embraces and has embraced for many, many years. And this is proclamation in honor of National Black History Month 2025. And we have members of the North County, North Sandiwash County NAACP, who are here with us to celebrate this proclamation. Please come on down. Including Satia Austin, who is the president and has been president for 11 years. Let's give her a great hand. Let's give North County NAACP a really big hand. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and read this, and then I'm going to hand the mic over to you, Satia, and others. Whereas, the City of Oceanside takes great pride in recognizing February 2025 as National Black History Month, celebrating the many notable contributions that people of African descent have made to our country and to our city. And whereas, African Americans share a history of great struggles and sacrifices by men and women who came to these shores as slaves in chains, considered as chattel, and by their descendants, whose rights as a people in our country continue to be systematically denied. And whereas, Negro History Week was first established in 1926 by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, ASALH, under the leadership of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, famed African American historian known as the father of black history. And whereas, in 1976, ASALH expanded the celebration of Black History Week to a month-long celebration of black history, followed 10 years later by Congress in 1986 with Public Law 99-244 designating the month of February as an annual public and private celebration of National Black History Month. And whereas, this year's national theme for the observance is African Americans and Labor, highlighting the significant contributions of black Americans to the workforce throughout history, recognizing the crucial role black workers have played in shaping the United States, often facing discrimination and challenging conditions. And whereas, City of Oceanside is committed to equity, inclusion, and the cultural and racial affirmation of our youth, parents, staff, and community members who identify as African Americans. And whereas, the City of Oceanside's goals must include closing the equity and outcome gaps for African Americans through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of our African American community, ensure greater access and opportunity, honor their history, heritage, and contributions, and establish a venue for the continued dialogue between our African American and other diverse communities, such as by the recent establishment of the Community Relations Commission. Right? And whereas, the vision of the National American for the, excuse me, the Vision of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, is to ensure a society in which all individuals have equal rights without discrimination based on race. And whereas, the North Sandiwash County NAACP, founded in Oceanside in 1965 by Charsetta Allen, has worked judiciously and tirelessly for the achievement of equity, equality, and social and racial justice in Oceanside and the region through its many programs and efforts and by pursuing relationships with elected officials, including through the annual prayer breakfast on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, insisting on inclusion and fairness in processes and outcomes. And whereas, on February 20th, 2025, Congressman Mike Levin will be dedicating the Charsetta Reese Allen Post Office at 517 Seagate Drive in Oceanside, forever honoring the founder of the North Sandiwash County NAACP and the many great works of this organization. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as National Black History Month in the City of Oceanside and call upon our residents to continue our collective efforts in creating a world that is more just, equitable, and prosperous for all, here in Oceanside and throughout our community. Thank you. Our country, our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable council members, Madam Mayor, on behalf of our community, as well as our many executive committee members here standing before you, this work is not done by just me, so just look around here. We want to say thank you for this, you know, because especially with the times that we are rearing right now, a lot of organizations are hurting. There are a lot of people out there in need. And so, just because we, the name says National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, we are all color. We have not turned our backs on anyone in this community. We have been there, we're going to continue on, and from here on, we're going number four. We're not going back. And so, you want to join the fight with us, here we are. Thank you.
Fantastic words. Who else wanted to speak?
Gerald, you've got some words for us.
Y'all know I love the mic. Good evening to our honorable mayor, all of the city council. It is indeed a privilege to be here. You know, there was a comedian, Joan Rivers, and she used to say, can we talk? Well, I'm going to give you a little real talk. The elephant in the room is we live in a time right now where there's a lot of conflict, a lot of consternation, a lot of concern about the things that are going on, particularly as it relates to people of color. But I am so proud that I live in the City of Oceanside, where we do not have those same challenges, as evidenced by this proclamation this evening, and as was announced, the post office is going to be renamed. So, you know, it is a great privilege to be here, where we have great rapport with the city, the city council, police and fire. We have a community of people that come together. So, from the North Sandiwash County NAACP, we say thank each and every you for being our community partners. And thank you, Mayor, and city council, for this proclamation.
Thank you. Well, thank you here in Oceanside. We, as you know, celebrate our diversity, celebrate all of our community, and I'm just so proud to be able to stand here with such a great and wonderful organization for Black History Month this February. Thank you. Thank you. And we're going to have a picture. Okay, so chiefs, you've been asked to come down here. Thank you.
Chief.
Chief, chief.
Double chief.
Both chiefs.
Listen, chief.
We got a student here.
One more chief.
Three more.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Recording in progress. Next is our closed session report.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. City council did meet in closed session today on multiple items. First item, item one, conference with labor negotiator regarding labor negotiations with the Oceanside Firefighters Association. City council did meet and receive information, but there's no reportable action at this time. Item two, there were two pending cases, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. Item one, Brent Ross and versus Denise Doogie. Council did meet, provide direction as to potential settlement terms, no reportable action at this time. Item two, Greg Sandifer versus City of Oceanside Workers Compensation Case. Again, council met, provided direction as to potential settlement terms, but no reportable action at this time. And then the additional legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to 54956.9, writing one fact, one case based on January 28, 25 letter from Cox Castle. Council did meet, deliberate and provide direction, but no reportable action at this time. Item three, council also met in closed session regarding conference with real property negotiator regarding property at 928 North Coast Highway, City of Oceanside and Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Price and terms and direction were discussed and provided, but there's no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. We're on to our consent calendar items. Those items are items four through 12. Do we have any requests from the public to pull?
We have a request from the public to pull item number eight.
Okay, number eight. Is there any request to pull by the council? Any request, any motion to approve the balance?
Remove.
There's a motion?
A second.
There's a second. All right, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you very much. Item number eight is staff recommends that the city council approve Amendment Three to the Professional Services Agreement, PSA, with Bureau Veritas North America, Inc., in the amount of $62,915 for a new agreement total of $272,475 for consultant fire and life safety plan review services, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment. And Mr. Jimmy Naught?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127, Sherri Lane. I rise tonight to bring to your attention, as I have in the past, how that the public safety in our mobile home parks is challenged, especially when it comes to fire and life safety. And I wanted to make sure that the plans that we have into our parks, as required by state law to be reviewed by the city, are included into somehow the review plans and services that will be reviewed by our public safety and fire department, because we've had numerous fires over the last few years, and also blockage of accessways, to see if those can be mitigated or improved. Thank you.
Thank you for your words, Mr. Naught. I'll go ahead and move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. We're on to our general items. Item number 13, staff presents the fiscal year 2025-26 through fiscal year 2029-30, general fund five-year financial forecast for review, and seeks direction to proceed with the development of a fiscally sustainable budget strategy that aligns with the city's long-term goals and priorities. Staff concurrently recommends that the city council approve the allocation of 50% of the fiscal year 2023-24 general fund surplus, which is $8.25 million, to the San Luis Rey River Project Flood Control Project Reserve Account, and the appropriation of the remaining 50% of the surplus, another, again, that's 8.25 million, to the El Corazon Parkside One Project. We're going to go ahead and begin with a report by Jill Moya, our Financial Services Director. Ms. Moya?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director, and tonight we will review the city's five-year general fund forecast for fiscal years 2026 to 2030. This forecast is an important tool the city uses to project the cost of maintaining current service levels, as well as how operational changes would affect the general fund's future financial status. Following best practice, we update our forecast annually and use it as a tool to help us develop a balanced general fund operating budget for the next year. Revenue projections from our two largest general fund revenues, property tax and sales tax, are developed using technical forecasts created by our property and sales tax consultants. Staff's analysis of current economic trends, past trends, and our estimates of future development are used to forecast the remaining general fund revenues. Expenditure forecast is built using prior year's expenditure budget and adjusting for known or expected changes. We include CPI increases if deemed necessary per economic outlook projections, and we include known and estimated salary increases for all city bargaining units. We also include any known changes in operations or positions, as well as estimated future CalPERS costs as calculated by our CalPERS actuarial reports. For the first year of the forecast, we are projecting 6.9% growth in revenue compared to the current year's budgeted revenue. These projections are in line with our consultants' projections and current year's revenue trends. Our expenditure forecast includes 3% CPI increase in maintenance and operational costs for the first year and 2% increases in the following years. Our forecasted expenditures also include all known and negotiated personnel costs and placeholders for increases in future years. CalPERS costs are estimated to increase by $12.7 million over the next five years. These increases are included in the forecast as well. This forecast assumes that we maintain current service levels and does not include any new This forecast also includes the reclassification of a senior IT analyst to IT director, which has a $51,000 impact on the general fund. Also included is a transfer of $3 million to the Capital Improvement Fund for infrastructure investment. This funding will be available for recommended CIP projects during the CIP budget process. Additionally, several departments received one-time funding in the current year's budget for expenditures or programs that require ongoing funding. This forecast added these items as ongoing budget adjustments. This graph shows prior year performance of three of our main general fund revenues, property tax in blue, sales tax in orange, and transient occupancy tax in green. The dotted lines to the right, or to the left, or to the right, sorry, show our projections for these revenues for the next five years. While we are projecting growth for all three of these revenues, we still consider this growth to be conservative and in line with past trends. As previously noted, our general fund forecast is projecting an increase of $12.65 million over the next five years. This increase is based on the July 2024 CalPERS actuarial report, as well as historical Using all of the previously noted assumptions and updates, for fiscal year 25-26, we are projecting $231.2 million of revenue and $227.4 million of expense, resulting in a $3.8 million surplus. Staff is currently working on the fiscal year 25-26 budget using next year's forecasted expenditures as our baseline. We will be holding a budget workshop April 30th for council's review and input of the preliminary budget. The net surplus, the net surplus of $3.8 million will allow for some one-time items and some new ongoing costs. While the forecast allows you to see the general fund projections for the next five years, it is also helpful to remember that through responsible stewardship and future planning, the city has built up reserve balances, as shown in this graph. The first bar shows the city's healthy city reserves and economic stabilization reserves of a total of $36.3 million. These funds are reserved in the general fund and are available only as temporary revenue source in the event of fiscal hardship. The second bar shows the pension reserves of $22.5 million. The third bar shows the infrastructure reserves of $39.6 million. These funds have been set aside in the general fund for future capital projects and deferred maintenance needs, such as the San Luis Rey River Project and pier maintenance. The fourth bar shows reserves of $1.6 million that have been set aside for employee costs, such as workers' compensation costs and retirement payouts. The last bar shows the general fund unassigned balance of $2 million. The total of these general fund reserves is $104.3 million, or 48% of the general fund operating budget. Additionally, $16.5 million of the general fund's prior year surplus is available to allocate. Per Council Policy 200-13, 50% of the surplus is to go toward a long-term unfunded liability. Staff is recommending that 50% of the surplus go to the San Luis Rey River Reserve Account, which is one of the city's long-term unfunded liabilities. And the other 50% go towards El Corazon Parksite One, which would close the funding gap for That concludes this presentation. Staff recommends that city council accept the fiscal year 2026 to 2030 general fund five-year forecast and approve the allocation of $8.25 million to the San Luis Rey River Reserve Account and appropriate $8.25 million to the El Corazon Parksite One Project. I am available for any questions you may have.
Yes, Ms. Moya, I do have a question. Every year, we set aside, as part of that policy, 50% to go towards PERS. Why is the recommendation for the San Luis Rey Flood Control Project, why is that more critical?
So, per our council policy, we are required to put 50% towards an unfunded, a long-term unfunded liability. Historically, we have sent it to pay down our unfunded liability with CalPERS. However, we do have this liability coming up. We have a contractual obligation for the San Luis Rey River Project with the Army Corps. We are required to pay 20% of this project, and the project is moving. We're going to need to pay it in the next couple of years, so we want to make sure we have sufficient funds to pay our portion of that.
Mr. Burg, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I was also going to add, in addition to that, things are trending positively with respect to our PERS paydown, which does provide kind of a unique window at this moment to go ahead and allocate that money towards the river project.
All right. And is the river project, is it really critical at this time? I understand the Army Corps is working on a study to come up with the last of a list of things that are needed to finally complete the project within a year, is it?
Yes, so they're actually, right now, as we speak, the Army Corps is doing a detailed assessment of the levee system. That is actually a big milestone in the project, and once the results of that study are known, which should be later this year, that'll actually inform the final costs for any necessary upgrades and repairs that are needed to the levee system. So, as was recently shared with the city council, we expect that the Army Corps, from this point forward, is going to be moving forward on that project, and so it is imperative that we have our fair share available and in hand, so that we don't slow down the progress that the Army Corps is making.
I also have an additional slide here that shows how much we've sent towards our unfunded liability in the last several years. You can see that 50% surplus is what you're referring to. We don't have last year, because that year hasn't been completed, but, so if we were to not send it to CalPERS and we were to, you know, allocate it to the San Luis Rey River, we wouldn't have anything in that column there, but we're still paying it down with our prepayment savings, because we pay one lump sum in July, which gives us savings. That savings that we get from that payment, we then also send to pay down our CalPERS liability, and we also, per council policy, use one-third of all interest earned, and we pay it down as well. So that is continuing to happen.
Right, so the balance right now for the San Luis Rey Project is at $12 million. This would get us to $20 million, and there's still another $6 million that we'd have to find to pay. All right.
Correct, from what we know now, if the costs don't change.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Robinson, did you have questions?
I was going to move staff recommendation.
Oh, we're going to hear from the public. I just had some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If we do put it in, let me ask this. If we do put it in this reserve account, it's not frozen there, right? We can always move it for something else if a bigger need came along?
Are you, you're talking about the San Luis Rey River amount?
Yeah.
I would not recommend moving that amount, that $8 million, just because it is council policy that this amount goes towards an unfunded liability. We could, I guess, take it from there and then send it to PERS if we wanted to do that, but we could take that $12 million, like, that was not set, that was just us, you know, allocating money when we could to that amount, so that is not constrained by council policy.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And so we'll go ahead and hear from the public. How many speakers?
I have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Joyce?
Sorry about that. I just had some, can I get a little bit of clarification on some of the funding that's going from one time to ongoing? The parks and rec maintenance and irrigation systems repairs, that was previously one time? Do we have an explanation why now that's ongoing? I mean, I could make assumptions, I just wanted to hear from somebody who knows.
The prior year projections were a little bit leaner. We didn't have the ability to make that one time, or ongoing fund, so in order to sort of give them what they need, but we weren't able to build it, you know, ongoing into our budget, so we gave them a one-time allocation last year, but we were able to build it in this year.
Thank you, and so we'll go ahead and hear from the public. How many speakers? Oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Joyce.
Sorry about that. I just had some, can I, can I get a little bit of clarification on some of the funding that's going from one-time to ongoing? The parks and rec maintenance and irrigation systems repairs? That was previously one-time. Do we have an explanation why now that's ongoing? I mean, I could make assumptions, I just wanted to hear from somebody who knows.
The prior year projections were a little bit leaner. We didn't have the ability to make that one-time or ongoing fund, so in order to sort of give them what they need, but, but we weren't able to build it, you know, ongoing into our budget, so we gave them a one-time allocation last year, but we were able to build it in this year, and we know that it's a need, and it's been asked for consistently year over year, so we were able to build it in as ongoing in this forecast.
Okay, thank you. And then, there's also... Do we, do we have the ability to, to do like a one-time exception to a council policy?
All, all, I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Burge?
Sure, legal, no, legal question.
Sure, a, a council policy is adopted by a majority of the council. It's intended to provide direction to staff as we move, you know, through our day-to-day operations and management of the city. If you, the city council majority were to direct a different use of those funds, they would have the discretion to do so.
Okay, and then, the, what we know about what we owe on the levee systems is, is going to change when they finish the study, probably?
Mr. Borrego?
Yeah, I would say that remains to be determined based on the outcome of the analysis that's currently underway.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think it's also fair to say that, you know, the costs have consistently escalated year over year, and the costs are reevaluated by the Army Corps every two years, so every two years, we get a new cost estimate, and they've consistently, the, the cost has consistently gone up, and with that, our fair share allocation also goes up correspondingly.
Okay, so, would, would the levy fix fall within what we traditionally consider something that would be reasonable for Measure X to be expended on because it's a public safety issue? I'm just curious if we have an idea about that.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I, I would say no, based on my knowledge of Measure X and the spending plans that have been adopted, and I think it's generally when we talk about public safety, it's police and fire, lifeguards. You know, certainly, I wouldn't feel comfortable making that interpretation absent some sort of formal direction from the Oversight Committee.
Okay. So, I, I guess part of why we are getting a lot of information about the San Luis Rey River project is, I brought up, and, then I was curious as to, if we're not going to spend all of the 8 million this year, maybe it would be prudent to temporarily suspend what I think is a really great policy in spending half of our surplus on unfunded liabilities, given the fact that we have...
Deputy Mayor, can I ask you? This is just for questions for her. Did you have a question in there? Because we still have to hear from the public.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you can do whatever comments and motions you want to make.
I'm not going to make a motion. I'm just explaining the question. I'll wait.
Okay, how many people do we have to speak?
We have two members of the public. Our first speaker is Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Joan Bachmann.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I'm glad that staff brought forward in their explanation, presentation of the subject, known and expected changes. Due to the federal intrusion into our local government, as typified by a number of executive orders, what's happening is this can impact us very, very strenuously. One example is DEI. What is the government, federal government is doing is almost any agency or any entity that has any form of DEI is being stripped of their capability to enforce it or include it. DEI is central to a lot of our goals and aspirations here in the city of Oceanside, as was typified by the presentation preceding this meeting. What we have is, is federal and federally impacted funds onto a lot of our homeowners and residents. It's, what was presented to you is way too optimistic. We don't have the numbers that will be impacted in our community, in our city. We need to prepare a pessimistic budget with backup plans for worst-case scenario in case the federal government extends, like they're trying to do now, into each and every school district in our nation, in case they do it to every city in our nation. And we need to look at it seriously, because we also have the thing of the state deficits we have to look at as well. People don't think in this amount of time that we have now, it's not going to happen here. Guess what? It will. We have to look at what the impacts are from the federal government onto local governments. We have to look, and I think that the 12.5, 12.65 increase and savings and everything may be coming up to a $24 to $50 million reduction or impact due to federal intrusion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Joan Bachmann.
Hello, Joan Bachmann. I'm here with friends of El Corazon. We couldn't be happier today. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is wonderful to move Park One forward. I want to just mention, this is one of the last steps in an extremely long process. It involved a lot of public input, two complete sets of design with public input that it went through, and as we were doing a lot of the development on the park, which was on the urban side of the park, we needed to remind everybody that El Corazon is a park, 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 park. The entire thing is a park. But just to be clear, within that park or nine? So there are nine parks in there. The very long specific plan details these out. And so getting Park One built is so important to our bigger park, which is an entire park, like Balboa Park is a park. The zoo isn't a, isn't a park for picnics, but it's still in the park. So we're similar to that, to Balboa Park and things like that, but moving this forward is awesome. This is a great thing to do. It's been a very long time coming, and people have been working on this for quite some time, since around 2000. So, we appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, and great to see the city complete all the tasks that were needed. It was a lot of city work, and we appreciate the, the dedication to getting to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's it for the public comments. Deputy Mayor, would you like to continue?
What is the timeline for Park Site One? I know we don't have a hard timeline, but what, what kind of overall timeline are we looking at?
I have, I'm, see our city CIP manager in the audience, or actually, our project manager, yes, Kimberly, is here, so if she can go ahead and share some information.
So, good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Councilmember Joyce, the timeline for El Corazon, right now, we are about to receive our 90% submittal for design. We are looking to complete the design by summer of this year. We are working, given that we have the funds, we are working to see if we can get a portion of the project into construction by the end of the year. There's some soil remediation that needs to happen, that is expected to take about a year before we can start construction on the actual park. So if all goes well, we would start construction on the park at end of 2026.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So just to complete the, I guess, the thought that I was in the middle of earlier, I think this would have been a good year for us to be flexible in thinking about it, given that we're not going to expend the San Luis Rey River funds next month, or next year, and we have a ton of citywide infrastructure, CIP needs that could be invested in. I don't get the sense that there's a, a temperature for that on the council. I understand that the, why the policy's in place, and I think it's a really good policy to make sure that you're planning ahead and funding your unfunded liabilities. This one just doesn't seem as immediate, and we also had this unusually large surplus last year, and I just think, maybe we think about that in the future years if we run into this good problem to have, because when people's tax money gets collected for the city to use, they expect it to be used on, on their city and not squirreled away. So, I'm not going to make any motions to change anything. I think, you know, I'm hopeful that this is exactly what we need for the river project, and we, we finally get off this very long pathway, but, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Is it okay to do the motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Yes, looking for a motion here.
I'll move staff's recommendation, and, and the reason I ask just for Councilmember Joyce about moving the money is, I agree, if, if it opens up or we forget estimates that are less, then I think we can definitely come back and look at doing something, but for now, I'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay. I'm very, very excited about El Corazon. I think we're all on the same page on this. We've been holding hands for over 25 years, it feels like, anyway. So, you know, sweaty hands, whatever, but it's time, and it's time to deliver to our community a promise that has been made, and very excited that engineering is at 90%. That's fantastic. When I asked this question last year, when can we do, you know, put that shovel in and, you know, groundbreaking, I had been given it last year, the estimate of fall of, of this year. So, maybe that's close? Yeah? Okay, there we go. So we're actually looking at something that's going to happen starting this year. Isn't that exciting? Really, really exciting. As to this policy that we have, generally, every year, we look at PERS. We were so behind for so many years, and when I first got on the council, what, how it was explained to me why we had such a huge cost that we were liable for, PERS, that's retirement, we, we, it's like, you know, social security, you have to pay in it, into it, you can't hold up someone's retirement. So what, the way it was explained to me is that in, in good times, when the fund was doing really well, city, city councils in the past would say, okay, we don't have to pay this year, and then in bad times, well, gee, we have to pay something, right? So we ended up going, getting behind, and what we should have been doing is paying every year. And so, we're, I, I think we're doing well. That policy, it's, it's become a very critical policy. As to the San Luis Rey River project, I remember the early 2000s, or actually even before that, I remember that we used to have a raging river, and it, it cost some lives. That's why we had the El Camino Real Bridge over the river. Remember, it was a toll road, meaning that's how much it was important to us, that we didn't even have all the funding together, and this was a way of making that happen, and, and finally, finally being able to have a safe route across the river. The river, a, a lot of people live along the river, also businesses. People are concerned, in, in the early 2000s, there was no mowing going on, so we were actually concerned that if there was some kind of flash flood, that it could take down a couple of the bridges. So this, this is a really, really critical project, remains a critical project, especially in light of climate change and, what do they call the rivers up there, whatever. But I, I understand that we have needs and we, we, for the communities, and so we're, I think that we're very creative here in trying to meet those needs. Every year, we try to address them, and I'm very proud to be able to work with other council members in, in finding ways to meet those needs. The, the San Luis Rey River project is very, very, clearly very, very important, and next in, in that is the concrete part of the pier, which I would have said, look, we need to, to invest in this. It's, it's going to be a $47 million project, at least at, at right now, and that's, I don't know if tariffs are going to impact that cost, but we're talking about a, a concrete part that is near 100 years old and is already started in some places to be a problem. We can't close that. We, we can, you know, if, if there's a delay and we can't build it right away, we cannot close that pier. It will impact a lot of people's lives, along with tourism, but, you know, a lot of people use that pier for fishing, for actually eating, and so these two projects, for me, are the, the most critical for our city, and we have to find ways to, to fund these. Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah, Councilmember Joyce, I don't, I don't disagree with your assessment of, I mean, with the river, at the glacial speed the Corps of Engineer works, it's going to be years before we spend all that money. I'm glad we're setting it aside, I think it is important, but whenever staff brings forward the proposed capital improvement budget, they list a number of unfunded projects, and so what I would ask my colleagues is, when you get that book and have the briefing from staff, put a priority list together, do like your top two or three, and let's have a conversation to see if we should, shouldn't move some of that money to something else. I, I, I think that would be worthy of a discussion, so when we, when we do the budget presentations, if we can at least focus on that, then maybe we can do something.
I've actually asked staff, Councilmember Weiss, for a prioritizing workshop, so that we can talk about all the, the priorities of the city, the, the projects in the city, and, and really, we haven't done any, anything like that in years, so I would like to go ahead and request that, so that we can have those kind of conversations. Mr. Borrego, is that something that we can have staff schedule?
Yeah, I mean, subject to council's concurrence, certainly, we can get working on that. We would need some, you know, probably some conversations to make sure that we were meeting expectations in terms of the subject matter that we were covering, but certainly, if council direction is to proceed with something like that, we'd be happy to do that.
All right, I don't, I don't know if we have to, if, if that needs to be part of the motion, or did you just want to hear from us right now?
I would, I would prefer that it be part of the motion.
Okay. Would you add that to the motion? That we direct staff to, to schedule a prioritizing workshop?
Yes, I'll add it to the motion if the second oral...
Is there a second? Okay, there is a motion, a second, so the motion has been changed. All right, no other lights, let's, let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, and this would be before the budget hearings, right?
Yes, and, and I would...
That's the El Corazon corner over there, cheerleaders, you know?
Yes, and I'm assuming in the context of the budget, we're talking about the prioritization of CIP projects, is that...
CIP, the priorities of the city. For funding.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Do we have, how many people do we have for public comment on items not on the agenda?
We have three speakers.
Okay, let's go ahead and take them.
Our first speaker is Steve Burrell, to be followed by Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Diane Nygaard.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Steve Burrell, Oceanside. Before I speak on what I intend to speak on, I just want to acknowledge the work that friends of El Corazon have done. They stand as examples of what we're trying to do by civic engagement, particularly around senior issues for Oceanside. So kudos to you, and this is what this is about. How can we work to... How can we work together to make this a better community? And they've fought and they've hung in there for a long time, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. But what I just wanted to do tonight was just bring attention to the Age Friendly City Program where we're at it. We completed the start with the survey that we did, and now we're moving into what we call listening sessions. And they'll start the 24th of February and go to the 24th, there's four of them, of March. And then after that, we'll have the process of developing an action plan out of all of the information that we've gathered, both through the surveys and the listening session. So that's a very simple kind of a description of what we intend to do. And I just wanted to say something too. Kind of hard to probably get your head around all of this, but it's really, the age-friendly plan is really an organizational framework for ops break. And that's really what it is. And that's what you had with your group, and that's what we need to do to move this forward. Because this is a quality of life initiative, so that's no small thing. So I just wanted to say that. Hopefully, as we get further into this, people will better understand that. Last thing I want to say is, you know, what we want to do is we do want to encourage people's participation in this process. If any of you are interested in, for example, at the question, at the listening sessions, you want to conduct and be trained to do a listening session, come on down. I plan to do it, and I think it'll be a lot of fun to hear from our neighbors firsthand how they feel about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I wanted to bring up to the council's attention what's going on in some of our mobile home parks, mainly those that are corporate-owned. And that is, there are selective wars going on by the corporate owners against elderly seniors who are renting from the park owner the mobiles into the parks. And what's happening is, is that they're beginning to get eviction notices, and there's no recourse. What's happening, these people, these seniors, some of them in their late 80s, early 90s, are being forced out onto the street to become your and our new homeless. So once again, the rich are forcing onto the rest of our society dependencies because they want profit. This is something that is unacceptable, and this is something that our council can easily stop. To very simply tell the park owners they have, when they do a rental, because what happens is that when they pay and get the money for the rental property, and as a senior, they have certain obligations. It's called being human. You don't kick a person out and throw them out. You have an obligation. You have a social obligation. So I wanted you to know that this is occurring in a number of our mobile home parks. It's been brought to my attention, and every time I hear it, it grieves me. It pulls on my heart. And I don't know exactly what to do or what to say, but I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. And if you would, forward to me any names, all names, because I have not received any information about that, and I know of no one who is being evicted. So please get that information to me. Thank you. Ms. Nygaard?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. Over two years ago, we created a fund for once, to be used for one single purpose, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Oceanside. And we reached out to city staff and said, we've got this fund, you have an obligation to reduce our emissions, you've got a climate action plan that requires certain action, let's figure out how we can work together and use that money to benefit our community. And we've reached out several more times in the last two years. But here we are without one proposal from the city. Money sitting in the bank doesn't do any good for our community. We really want to spend those funds. We know that there are many other organizations that would be happy to take our money. We really, tonight, we're putting you on six months' notice. I think two and a half years is enough time to come forward with a proposal. Otherwise, we'll issue an RFP, and we expect lots of other organizations can find good ways to spend that money. We would like the City of Oceanside to be first in line. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have another five minutes. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we'll be taking up our 6:00 public hearing. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started again. We have two public hearing items. Let's go ahead and get started with item number 14. Staff recommends that the Committee Development Commission adopt a resolution approving a regular coastal permit to permit two unpermitted rooftop decks at 151 South Meyer Street. I'm going to go ahead and open this portion of the public hearing and ask, and ask that council members disclose any constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff and I went by the side.
Staff report only.
Staff?
Only staff.
All right. Mr. Borro, is there any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
All right, so we have testimony beginning with Dane.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Dane Thompson with Planning Division, presenting item number 14. Staff and the Downtown Advisory Committee recommend that the City Council and Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving a regular coastal permit to permit two unpermitted rooftop decks at 151 South Meyer. The project site is a 12-unit apartment complex located on the corner of Tyson Street and Meyer Street within the downtown sub-district 5. Here you can see the 12-unit apartment complex and the subject rooftop decks. The applicant is requesting a regular coastal permit to legalize the two unpermitted rooftop decks. Deck one faces west and is approximately 275 square feet. Deck two faces east and is approximately 20 square. Because the site is located within the Coastal Commission Appeal jurisdiction, a coastal development permit must be processed. From aerial imagery, staff found that the rooftop decks were constructed sometime between 2001 and 2005. Code enforcement staff issued a citation to the property owner in 2022 after receiving a complaint for unpermitted construction in the rooftop sun. It should be noted that the applicant is not proposing any expansions to the building and that the rooftop decks can only be accessed through Unit G, giving exclusive access to one house. Here you can see the planned view of the rooftop decks, and as you can see, they take up approximately 5% of the total rooftop area. A chief concern for this project was the potential for privacy impacts to the surrounding community. So in order to analyze those impacts, staff evaluated all properties within a 100-foot radius from the site. Properties to the north and east were found to not have impacts due to the locations of the rooftop decks. Properties to the west were found to not have impacts due to lack of side or rear yards. And properties to the south were found to not have impacts as their existing yards are open and visible to all, even at street level. Should be noted that city has not received any privacy complaints in the 20 to 25 years since installation of rooftop decks. Here is a visual aid for that analysis. You can see the sites to the west don't have rear yards, and the sites to the south have transparent fences and visible yards. I also have more detailed slides for directional views if the council desires. Staff have reviewed the project and found it to be in conformance with all relevant city code's policies. The project is consistent with the policies of the local postal program and therefore the general plan, as the project would not affect postal access, impair public views, or remove public parking. The project complies with the zoning ordinance as the development standards of the E5 sub-district are met, and the project is not proposing any expansions to the existing structure. The project has complied with the city's enhanced notification policy as staff sent out the required mailers, and the yellow notification project sign has been posted on site. To date, no comments have been received on the proposed project. On October 23rd, 2024, the Downtown Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend CDC approval and did not express any concern. With that, staff recommends that the CDC adopt a resolution approving regular coastal permit, RRP 241, to permit two unpermitted rooftop decks at 151 South Meyer Street. That concludes my presentation. I'll be available for questions. The applicant is also in the audience. They're available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, so if, so the applicant is here, does that person wish to speak? Have up to 20 minutes. Doesn't have to use up all that time.
Honorable Mayor, they do not wish to present any.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're going over to the public for comments. Did anyone sign up?
We did not have any, we did not have any members of the public sign up to speak.
All right, thank you very much. So you did not have to have signed up. If there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this specific project, please rise, approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak on this item. If you wish to share any of your thoughts about this project. Seeing no one rise, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and address our council. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt the resolution. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. No one else wishing to speak, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Next is item number 15. Staff recommends that the City Council introduce ordinances amending chapters 29 and 37 of the city code, allowing water and wastewater rates to be approved by a resolution of the City Council and introduce an uncodified ordinance to establish a protest procedure under AB 2257, thereby providing an administrative remedy that must be exhausted as a prerequisite to filing a legal challenge to rate changes under Prop 218. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and ask council members to make disclosures regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff only.
Staff and I think a couple of public emails.
No contact.
Same. No contact, staff only.
Mr. Borro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by John McCalvi, Principal Management Analyst. Mr. McCalvi? Good to see you again.
Excuse me, technical issue. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, council members. John McCalvi, Principal Management Analyst from Water Utilities, here to speak on the item today. We've got a couple of recommendations. First of all, introduce, as you mentioned, ordinances amending chapters 29 and 37 of the city code, allowing water and wastewater rates to be approved by a resolution of the City Council. Second, introducing their ordinance, amending chapters 29 and 37 again of the city code to establish a protest procedure under AB 2257 to avoid legal challenges to rate changes under Prop 218. So a little bit of background. Currently, rates are, rate changes are approved by this council and future councils via ordinance, which requires a second reading, a 30-day waiting period unless the ordinance is accepted as an urgency matter. So it can delay sometimes. If we get to council late, we get to council in, say, November, we've had instances where rates were not able to be effective July, excuse me, January 1st. So that's an important distinction to note. So what this action will do is change rates approval to resolution, which can be effective immediately. Additionally, a recent law change in September, AB 2257, was signed by the governor, which provides a framework to avoid challenges to rate, to our water and sewer rate changes under Prop 218. The proposed ordinance before you will implement that framework to allow us to have a protest process in place. I want to clarify for all the ratepayers out there that are listening, this does not affect your rights to challenge or protest our rates whatsoever. It's simply an administrative change. We'll still have our Prop 218 notice to all ratepayers. You'll still have 45 days to review it and come to the hearing, and if you disagree, you can certainly protest at that point. It's clean up due to changes in the law, and like I said, it's a procedural change only. It allows us to implement rates sooner rather than later if we need. And typically, when we bring rates forward, they are effective January 1st of the rate year. The last time we did this, we, under the ordinance model, we got to council in November. The rate hearing was delayed a day or a week, I forget exactly what. But the impact of that was we could not collect rates at the new rate starting January 1st, so we had to hit reserves in order to cover the additional costs that we incurred. So that's an impact to ratepayers. There is no fiscal impact from the action today because it's simply a process change. And once again, our recommendations are twofold. First of all, introduce the ordinances, the ordinances amending chapters 29 and 37 of the city code, allowing water and wastewater rates to be approved by resolution rather than ordinance. And then second, introduce an ordinance amending, again, chapters 29 and 37 of the city code to establish a protest procedure under AB 2257 to avoid legal challenges under Prop 218. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be a sidebar if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to address the council and provide the council their opinions on this item and their requests. Are there any requests to speak?
We have one from Jimmy Knott.
Okay, Mr. Knott. And then you did not have to sign up. Again, you can speak without having signed up. Just approach the podium, we've got two podiums, and state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I personally don't like when the process for the public is complicated. And what happens is, is that this process seems like the lawyers got involved, and they decided, let's put another step in to complicate the process for the public and confuse it a little more. Because what you have is the due process rights, but along with due process rights, you also have due process responsibilities. And this is an area where you have an unclear area of due process responsibilities. If you If you don't take and protest under the first level, do you lose your right under the second level or even, let's say, if it's contested in court, into court? So the question is, is that your loss of rights because of additional step is, would be implemented, would be considered into this process? And do we need to take that into consideration for the public and maybe somehow put into our ordinance saying that this will not affect your due process rights? And I think that would be the simplest way of addressing it. Because the public needs to have involvement with their rates and the authority that's involved. Because as an example, until this last go-round, I found that one little spot where $51 would be charged to people that could not afford to pay the $51. They could not afford that extra amount. You know, they could not afford to pay their water bill, but yet it was proposed to be put into it. And I had councilmembers coming to me afterwards saying, "I didn't read it, didn't see that." Now, that is where the public comes in and says, "Hey, you know, this is what you need to have, is additional help of additional I." So I would like to have that due process amendment to be added to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please rise, approach the podium, state your name. You can speak for up to three minutes.
Counsel, Madam Mayor, I'm Penny Russell and resident of Laguna Vista Mobile Home Park. And if I understood what I just heard, it is an ordinance. They want to change it to a resolution so they can act quicker in order to implement increases to the water bills instead of dipping into their funds in order to fund the timeframe that is longer than they'd like it to be. Is that correct?
We can respond to you after you finish your comments.
Okay, so that's my comment. So I say, if it's not broken, let's leave it as an ordinance and not make any changes. Because I don't, from what I just heard, I'm not sure what the advantage to the people there would be in making this change. And I understand, I think, the changes, the advantages to the city, but it sounds like you'll end up probably getting your money. And if I also understood it, and it's a question, if we change it, we can stand outside and protest it, but if we go, we cannot legally protest it. And there may come a time when we need to be able to do that without penalty. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one rise, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask our city attorney if he can respond to the questions. These are really legal questions. And my understanding is that there, no one loses any rights whatsoever.
Sure. So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. And I'll defer to water staff if there's a little more detail that's necessary here, but there's two separate ordinances that are being considered. The first one is to change the adoption of the rates from an ordinance which requires a first read, second read, and implementation time to a resolution process, which makes them immediately implementable. There's still going to be a public hearing, there's still going to be, you know, all the timing that leads up to that. So it's just, you know, whether there's a second read after the first read. The second uncodified ordinance, what it does is it implements a new option under state law, where state law has been amended recently to afford this administrative remedy process, right? Previous to, for as long as I've been practicing law, the understanding was that in order to challenge rates, you had to exhaust your administrative remedies, meaning you had to show up, you had to protest, you had to make that record. There was a court case a few years ago, not even a few years ago, but basically undercut that and said, "No, it doesn't matter if you showed up or not, you can make that challenge at any point in time." The state legislature then adopted new laws to address that court case. What the city is doing is adopting this second uncodified ordinance to adopt the state law procedure for, you know, exhaustion of administrative remedies. For the due process concerns, they are built into that. So the state law lays out how that administrative process works. Staff's going to be doing, you know, multiple lead-up hearings, but due process is notice and opportunity. So you will have notice of these rate changes before they come, and you will have an opportunity to come in to this body and protest in advance, and that will preserve your rights to make a challenge going forward. And so that's the way that these two, as I understand them, ordinances are structured in the way that they're intended to interplay together, which then also provides the water utility and the other utilities the ability to make sure that they're not coming, you know, that they're collecting the funds that they're expending.
Mr. McElvy, do you have anything to add?
I think the city attorney summed it up pretty well. I will point out to council that previous to about, I want to say 2016, 2017, when, in researching, going to the ordinance or to the resolution from the ordinance, the reason that we believe we went to an ordinance, because the city used to adopt rates via resolution. They went away from that, and we believe it is because there was a section of the Health and Safety Code that specifically required an ordinance, not a resolution. In 2016, I believe, or 2017, that was changed to say ordinance or resolution. And again, the reason, we're not trying to get everyone's money faster, the rates, we will still have the same process, the same protest ability, the same hearings, the same notice to citizens and ratepayers. What changes is, if we take rates late in the year and don't get approval until December, that 30-day clock starts and we can't collect rates effective January 1st at the new rate, however, we are paying the water authority and everybody else at the new rate. So then we have to dig into reserves. That ultimately impacts our ratepayers. So we're not trying to get money faster, we're simply trying to keep up with our costs. And that's all I think I have to say on that.
Great, thank you. All right, to the council. Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. All right, no other comments. Mr. Burke, please title the ordinance.
Great, and I'd like to do this as two separate ordinance motions, so.
Two separate motions.
Two separate motions. So on the first one, this is the first, separate amount.
So the first motion then, Councilmember Weiss. Okay, great.
Fantastic. So this is the first.
So you make two, you're going to make two motions. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you for separating them out. This is the first read and introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending chapters 29 and 37 of the Oceanside City Code to authorize water and wastewater rates to be established by resolution of the city council.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
So we have a motion in a second again.
Right. This is the first read and introduction of an uncodified ordinance of the Oceanside City Council for the city of Oceanside, pardon me, establishing a procedure for ratepayer objections to proposed water sewer fees.
Okay, let's vote. Right, so this is an ordinance, and this will require a second reading and then 30 days. So for this initial period, it is treated as an ordinance. Thank you. All right, so we're at mayor and our councilmember comments. Anyone wish to comment? Councilmember Robinson.
Just a couple of quick things, recap some events that happened since our last council meeting, and because the last one ran so late, we didn't get to share. It's probably a good thing, I could have made it go longer. But I just wanted everybody to know some things that are going on, some things that I did. On the 23rd, the day after council, I did go to Sacramento for the Cal Cities Public Safety Committee. That committee basically looks at issues related to public safety for the Cal Cities organization and makes recommendations to support various legislation. On the 25th, I had a chance to go to the Oceanside Women's Club. If you've never been to one of their events, they do some fun stuff. They had a pancake breakfast fundraiser, and the reason I bring this one up is because it's, all the funds raised were going to our Oceanside High School combined choir for their trip to New York. They're going to be competing. And then on the 28th, and Councilmember Figueroa may have more to say about it, but the Libby Lake Futzell Court dedication happened. But I just publicly want to thank you. I didn't realize how much time and effort you'd spent on making that happen and working in that community. So it's in District 2, and I really appreciate all the efforts you put in on that. And had a couple of opportunities to meet with our congressman, Mike Levin. One was at the San Diego Rescue Mission Huddle on the 29th, and then on the 30th, I think we all had some time to spend with the congressman and talk about our priorities and projects. And I just wanted to say, the one thing that I did talk to him about was, and I spoke with the city manager about this, was how can we get the Army Corps of Engineers to allow us to do more complete maintenance on the riverbed, considering the fire activity and all the concerns people have, to try to eliminate some of the combustible materials in the riverbed, which would also have a benefit should, as the mayor was talking earlier tonight about flooding, because I can assure you, with some of that overgrowth in there, it would have a grave impact on our flood channels. And then finally, on the 31st, I had a chance to go meet with some residents out at Fireside Park, and their concerns were homeless encampments. And I just want to comment that today I went out there to look, and we had OPD and officers out there, and our crews were out there, taking down four huge encampments that were out there, and they're cleaning them up. And I was told it's probably going to take them a better part of a week to get all that work done. So I just wanted to comment and thank staff for being out there and getting that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Figueroa?
Yeah, so it was a busy last two weeks since our last meeting. On the 27th, I had the opportunity to do our, as my onboarding process of being a new councilmember, got the opportunity to do our Water Utilities Tour, which was very fascinating. Not to say anything about the other departments that I had a chance to do briefings with, but just to learn about just the inner workings of our water department. It was really fascinating, eye-opening for me, and I really appreciated staff taking the time to provide that tour in the city manager's office for setting that up. We did get the opportunity to do the ribbon cutting on the 28th at Libby Lake, and I was sharing with someone today how that initiated, almost 10 years ago, we did a mural project at Libby Lake Park, which was part of community cleanups, neighborhood cleanups, that we received funding from the Oceanside Charitable Foundation. And really started, that was launched from how the city of Oceanside used to do these sun projects. And the kids at Libby Lake would always say, "How come we're not doing anything in Libby? I feel like we're always in the other neighborhoods." And obviously, every neighborhood would get its sun project, and the kids at Project Reach Libby Lake took it upon themselves to just start doing community cleanups, and we would do something called Clean the Block, where we'd walk down Caia Montecito with the middle school kids from Project Reach Libby Lake, and we'd pick up trash and walk into the park, and we would weigh it afterwards, and then we would present to the city council how much trash we collected at the end of the year. And from that, we were able to get funding to do these murals. And when we did the community reveal, like in July of 2015, at that time, Councilmember Chuck Lowery and I were standing at the top of the mural, looking down at what used to be a volleyball court. And he said, "You know, what other improvements can we do here at the park?" And I said, "Well, the kids really want to replace this volleyball court with either just flat space or soccer or something." And he's like, "Well, let's see if we can move it forward." And from now, we started conversations with, who was our Parks and Recs director at that time, Eileen Turk. And so that was going on for quite some time, but it was really led by the youth at Project Reach Libby Lake. And I just really appreciate this council for moving that along, and our Parks and Recs director, Manny Gonzalez, and our city manager, because for that community, that community has had its history of tragedies and trauma, and to, for us to be able to have that celebration last week, it meant a lot for the community. And so I really, I'm thankful to our mayor and our staff and our council for moving that along. Last week, I had the opportunity to do the California Legal Cities in Garden Grove, newly-elected councilmembers and mayors, which was really great to meet councilmembers from all over Southern California. When I got to share about some of the stuff that we're doing here in Oceanside, I would say that most of the other elect, newly-electors, really fascinated about what we're doing here, but also our cohesiveness amongst our council and staff, and how we're, it seems to be more united than what it felt like in other parts of the state. I also got to do the point-in-time count, and that was, you know, I asked city staff to, the point-in-time count is when we go out four in the morning, we meet at four in the morning at El Corazon, and then we get separated into teams to do a count of our homeless population throughout the city. And I asked city staff if I could be on the team that did the Corey Creek and the encampments in Tri-City behind the Hobby Lobby, TJ Maxx. And I was accompanied by my council aide, along with Adrian Mendoza from our Neighborhood Housing, our assistant city manager, and our assistant chief of police and one of our lieutenants. There was an article written in the UT about our team, because the reporter was with our team. And I'll say, one of the things that we encountered while we did these, while we were around the encampments, about 95% of the people that we spoke to were born and raised in Oceanside. They were Oceanside residents, and I just wanted to acknowledge our assistant chief of police, Assistant Chief McKean, who knew a lot of these, a lot of the residents that we encountered, and he's known them for quite some time prior to them becoming houseless, and just how he approached them in the conversations that they were having. And then our Neighborhood Housing staff being able to be there to provide resources. There was one individual that immediately we called the Rescue Mission, and they were on their way to speak with them. And so just being a part of, that was my third year doing that, but that was a great experience. And then we got to do the Crown Heights groundbreaking, which I'm sure some will share. And just in regards to the commission's, Community Relations Commission, there continues to be discussion around the Community Relations Commission about expanding the Standing Oversight Committee that is under the Police and Fire Commission, which reviews police and fire complaints, and the desire for the Standing Oversight Committee to be expanded to include the Community Relations Commission. So that's been an ongoing conversation. And then I also sit on the Clean Energy Alliance, so my last point, they, just my feedback or my notes from there, the Residential Peak Smart Savers Program, it's a new program with the Clean Energy Alliance Residential Peak Smart Savers Program. It's equivalent to the SDGNE Time of Use Program. Program website will be up late February, early March, and it's aimed to be launched in the summer of 2025. And they're also doing an energy storage with Camp Pendleton, it's a 20-year lease. Yeah, so those are just my updates. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I attended a few of the things that were brought up. I want to focus, try and focus on the ones that maybe haven't. So as the Housing Commission liaison, I attended last week, and they were speaking primarily about the five-year plan for our CDBG funding, which is a little more than $2 million a year of funding. It goes to various projects, and some of it is for direct service, and some is for overhead. And the commission really spoke about trying to make sure that this funds, these funds go into housing, because we have such a really, we have such a deficit of affordable housing in our city, and we really need to be hitting on all cylinders when it comes to supporting those who need housing. And those that are in housing now, and they're seeing their rents rise, as I know some of us, even on council, are experiencing. So they heard, they have received a presentation, they haven't gotten a draft plan, but these are five-year plans that are built out so that priorities are set by the city over the next five years, and then each year we update the plan with a new spending plan. It shouldn't be lost that within this, within this time period was when we received. this time period was when we received a memo from the federal government that said, we're gonna freeze all federal programming, which was later rescinded. I laugh, but it's just, it's so outlandish that there's not really another appropriate response for the dais. So what I would just say is, you know, I know that our Housing Commission is gonna be very diligent about how that money's spent. I know that our staff is really interested in making sure that these programs are done to the best of possible, and that we are, when we go to the federal government's doorstep in Washington DC at the end of the month, we will be making sure that that is one of our top priorities, to make sure that we continue to fund those programs that are really serving the folks who are most in need in our city. I also attended the point in time count, and I just, I can't say enough how much I appreciate our staff, who, while we meet there around 4:00 AM, they're there much earlier, in the bleeding edge of night, and getting everything set up, getting coffee for those of us that need it, and then going out and doing the work and collecting the data. And this really sets the stage for our ability to make informed decisions on homelessness. And I know that we're gonna be getting some of that back next week at our homelessness workshop, which I didn't want to fail to mention, which is gonna be a very important conversation. The point in time is one piece of data that informs our thinking on that. And I just really appreciate our staff's leaning into that process. I also attended the NCTD Board Meeting. We got a basic overview of capital improvements. And as I kind of alluded to at our last meeting, I brought up that it wasn't super clear why a lot of the funding was focused in areas that were outside of the highest use areas. They did clarify that there were some very major projects coming down on the Sprinter line as a primary focal point, and that includes double tracking, that includes switching to a different fuel source, and really looking at how the Sprinter can connect our North County communities in a really effective way. Right now, the lead times are so long, and it can be very unreliable, because that technology is so far out of date. So getting the Sprinter up to date, and even looking at some ways that the Sprinter can be used in the way that the low-sand corridor, which is the coaster and the Amtrak line, is so essential to move goods up and down, maybe finding a way to use the Sprinter line in a way that connects goods east to west. And so it's really exciting. Again, I'm thrilled with the new movement. We also elected a chair, who is Chair Priya Batel out of Carlsbad. And then we elected a vice chair, and unfortunately, his name escapes me, because it was his first meeting at NCTD, and there was a little bit of a kerfuffle about why that happened. But I think his name is Councilmember Sinella, that's what it is, out of San Marcos. So we'll look forward to working with them to make sure our priorities as a city are taken seriously. The celebration of the 50th anniversary of North County Transit District is coming up, and we get to play host here in Oceanside, being the home of the Oceanside Transit Center. So it aligns with the 30-year anniversary of the coaster, and that will be coming in the next couple of months. So I promise I'll bring out those details and make sure our community is brought into that celebration. As we know, we have so many members that rely on it. We also had the groundbreaking at Crown Heights Resource Center, which is a happy-sad project. I'm really happy, because the community center is long overdue for the upgrades it needs. We had just the most basic issues with even the electricity, with access to bathrooms, with really a space that provides dignity to a community that really deserves a better center. And so we are, it is unfortunately shut down now for the next year, while those upgrades are taking place, and the programs are moved slightly down the street. But it is exciting to get it moving forward and to know that the end is near for when it will open up. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was that I did attend a peaceful gathering and protest over concerns from our community over a mass deportation agenda that has been expressed, although we're not maybe seeing it carried out yet. But there are real concerns that we should be hearing out from our communities, especially those that maybe don't have a history of being heard. This one was actually organized by one of our local youth. And I do want to thank OPD, because I did see our police officers on site, and they are supporting with safety concerns in the space. And I know that historically, that has sometimes had conflict, and that wasn't the case at all. And I appreciate OPD's support with that. I, you know, want to just make sure that we're hearing the voices of our community, and understanding that we have, because of these fears of deportation, we have kids that aren't going to school, we have parents that aren't getting to work, and we need to make sure that our entire community is taken care of through this time. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that youth for organizing, and encourage my council colleagues to hear them out. That's all.
Thank you. All right. So I did attend Sandag on the 24th. There were mostly presentations for that meeting. On the 26th, I attended a 100-year birthday at Ocean Hills Senior Living for Margaret Waddell, who had her ukulele club actually play for us during her celebration. So it was really, really exciting. City of Oceanside actually has a ukulele program right now. It actually comes with, you could learn how to play the ukulele, and you actually get a ukulele. So I believe there's still a few classes for that. Please check out Parks and Rec. Oh, Manny, do you know if there are any more classes for that? I think there are. So that was really pretty exciting to, she's very, very active, and actually sang some songs, too. Also, went to Libby Lake ribbon cutting, very, very exciting to see that there is excitement in that community about organizing. And this is the next community that will be getting our TLC by the city. We generally rotate, and it is time for Libby Lake community. So we're, I'm very, very excited that we're gonna be able to go out there, find out what the priorities are, and hopefully get a few improvements of that community. I did go to the Housing Commission meeting and listened also to the Consolidate Plan that was presented as part of the CDBG grant program, to basically talk about what the priorities are under the CDBG and home programs. There were, of course, some concerns that we may not know. What is the status of the CDBG we've been getting for, I don't know how long, maybe 30 years or so. Not a whole lot of money, but it certainly is, they certainly become critical to some, for example, for after-school programs. And to be able to help subsidize those who are needing help with their rents, because they were ill or something for a month, and, you know, need help for that one month. Believe they have up to a year that they can get support. Also, I got to talk, got to speak with, meet with Congressman Mike Levin, got a chance to ask him the questions that we were all wondering. It's like, what's gonna get cut? You know, we're hearing this, $2.5 trillion is gonna be cut. How is that gonna impact us? And you may not know this, but our whole housing department is funded through federal dollars, through federal housing dollars. General funds do not, there's not one dime of general funds that go into our housing department. So that could basically, you know, wipe out our department, or find, we'll have to figure out how to make, you know, continue ensuring that we have, you know, these issues of affordable housing and homelessness. And, you know, so this is very, very critical for us. And Congressman Levin advised, you know, at this time, that the fund that they're looking to cut is not actually the discretionary fund, which is, you know, includes these housing funds. It's actually a different fund. And that fund has more to do with Medicaid and health. And so his biggest concerns are what's gonna happen to our hospitals, or what can happen to our hospitals and our clinics. And so those were where he was, he's also on the appropriate, he's been assigned to the Appropriations Committee. So he's gonna be right there, center stage. Also attended Gizma meeting over at Rancho San Luis Rey. It was really, really exciting. We're talking about addressing some of the issues in our mobile home parks, and how we can do that, maybe focus on some issues that we can actually address via perhaps taking some of the residency, the state residency laws, and applying it, you know, and creating our own laws here locally. So it's, I'm very, very excited that we're gonna do that process, do a process. I understand Omaha is gonna be very much involved in making that happen. So go Omaha. I'm very excited. Yeah, I've got a couple of Omaha members here tonight. And Crown Heights, the, it's a historic building, so it's registered as the Americanization Center, although it's better known as the Crown Heights Community Center. I did ask Mr. Borrego, our city manager, were you at the time, our city manager, you were, our city manager, to a meeting that was being held there. And I didn't know that till later, that he noticed things about the building that probably needed help. And so when we received our ARPA funds, I had already heard that if you plug something into the building, everything goes out. So and obviously during COVID, we needed ventilation. We needed buildings that would be safe. And so with these COVID dollars, I asked that that be a priority, a community priority, and that is to fix the electrical, get some air conditioning in there, and do some basically general renovations that would get it back up to looking like she was. And I mean, this is Irving Gill building. It's a beautiful building, and the glass. So that was included. Thank you very much, Mr. Borrego, for including that within the ARPA funds. And so it was a groundbreaking, there was some, you know, dirt from somewhere brought in, and some shovels. But really, this is such an exciting thing for the community. There's, as you know, it's the highest density, well, maybe not anymore, but in a regular neighborhood. And there's just no space. There's a very small pocket park. I think it's even, I mean, it might be one of the smallest that we have, Seser Chavez Park. We have a little garden, community garden. Again, it's one lot. Not a whole lot of places for the kids to play. I'm very excited that the mural project is gonna be happening there, and that we do have some trailers where the community can meet. So I know that the kids are really, really gonna be very excited. This is a project that is with a school district. So it's really a school district's wall that we're talking about. Let's see. Sorry, didn't mean to take so long. I met with the representatives of Toll Brothers to go over the project. I had had a chance to share some observations and concerns. And I, let's see. See, I guess that's it for now. And anybody else wanting to report about, Peter, did you attend any? Okay. All right. So the next, the next meeting of the council is for a council workshop on the 12th. That's next Wednesday here, 5:30 on homelessness. So please come on down, share your ideas and thoughts about that. And then the next council meeting after that is the following Wednesday, February 19th. And that would be starting at 3:30 for closed session. So I do invite you to be, to come to both, the council workshop on homelessness. I have had, I've been talking to staff and some, you know, some other partners. And I think we have some exciting proposals and ideas in the works. So thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.